And we have a flag tonight, right? Okay. And we have attendees. All right, it's seven o'clock. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our mid-February board meeting. And we will start this meeting with call to order and the pledge of allegiance. And so we will do the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Okay, Kenny? And is there any discussion or any changes that need to be made to the agenda? Okay, all in favor, raise your hand and say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I see no opposing and abstentions. No abstentions, so we have an agenda for the evening. And we start, as we love to do, with recognitions. And we have Afton Strong students for January. So Erica, are you doing this one, or is it? Okay, great.
I am. I am. And this month, we have sixteen Afton Strong students who are quietly working to make the world a better place around them. If you're looking at the photo on Board Docs, we're starting at top left and going left to right as we move down the rows, if you want to keep track. So here we go. Let's start with Celia A., a second grader nominated by her teacher, Mrs. Thomas. Celia is always trying her best in our new way of virtual learning. Not only is she determined to make sure she is at every Google Meet and small meet, but she is also very encouraging and uplifting to the other students in the classroom. This year has been such a tough year of learning the new ways of our virtual learning, but Celia is always so positive and she is determined to make second grade an amazing and positive year. Next, we have RJ, a seventh grader nominated by Mrs. Lau. RJ is a team player. He always includes others and supports teammates and learning and participating in PE games and activities. RJ has an easygoing attitude and it's a great pleasure to have him as part of our PE classes. Next, we have Mason B., a sixth grader. Transitioning to Rogers Middle School under our current conditions is a challenge for all students, but Mason has embraced Rogers, his classmates, and his teachers. He is kind to all, offers humor throughout the day, and has a way of bringing positivity to any room he enters. His favorite spot at Rogers is the outdoor classroom. Mason took the initiative to offer improvements to the outdoor classroom to Dr. Buck, because what outdoor classroom isn't complete without a palm-leaf ceiling fan? Mason looks forward to each school day through a different lens than many other students. He finds joy in inviting his teachers and classmates to join him on his adventures, whether it be heading to the outdoor classroom, returning books to the library, or inviting his classmates to join him on a ride in his at-home elevator during Monday virtual meetings. Mason's character, initiative, genuine integrity, and unmatched work ethic are all qualities that make him an outstanding candidate for an Afton Strong student. Alan C. is a second grader. Alan is the epitome of Afton Strong. He attends all lessons with the eagerness to grow as a learner. He has a very calm demeanor, which helps him maintain focus on the lesson and the willingness to push himself to want to become a better reader and writer. One of Alan's greatest qualities is his desire to help others. A student in his ELL group is a newcomer from another country and came in with limited English skills. Alan stepped up to the plate and constantly wants to help him with asking follow-up questions instead of giving the answers. And most of all, he became his friend. Alan, one day, could be an amazing teacher. Here is the perfect moment that shows Alan's character. One morning, he came to school with his Afton Strong yellow shirt and he told me, "I want everyone to know to stay strong during this tough year." Next, we have Annabelle D., second grader. Annabelle is a great friend in the classroom. She is always eager to help friends when needed. She comes to school with a positive attitude and always tries her best, even when things are tough. She has also continued the hard work when learning virtually. I can always count on Annabelle to be a leader in the classroom. Next, we have Lance G., sophomore. Lance is in Summit Learning Biology. Our projects have focused on student-created models, and he takes great care to develop artistically creative and accurate models. Lance is open to feedback and has shown great growth through the feedback process of Summit Learning. His commitment to his learning is worthy of this recognition. Lance is Afton Strong. Aria G. is also a sophomore. I'm nominating Aria because I'm so proud of her for really stepping it up this semester. She really struggled last semester and has completely stepped up and took control over grades and is doing fantastic. Go, Aria, you got this. Next, we have another sophomore, Austin H. Austin has been friendly, courteous, kind, and reliable from the day I met him in November. He continues to come to school with the same positive attitude on a daily basis. He works hard every day, even when the tasks may seem hard or frustrating at times. He is not afraid to speak up or to be honest with his views or opinions. It's a pleasure to have him as a student and to see his smiling face every morning. Next, we have Leila H., a fifth grader. Leila is a hybrid student this year and has consistently shown her ability to work through challenges. She shows patience when situations don't go her way or are more difficult than they need to be. Leila is a role model in our classroom. We can always count on her to do the right thing and hold others to the same standard. I appreciate the way she advocates for herself and others, and that is why I'm nominating Leila to be an Afton Strong student this month. Keep it up. I, along with many people, are very proud of you. That's from her teacher, Ms. Stanton. Aiden H. is a third grader. Aiden works so hard every single day. He advocates for himself when he needs help, which is so important in the virtual class. Aiden is a pleasure on Google Meets. He is always kind and respectful to teachers and other students. I'm so glad Aiden joined our class this semester. Next, we have junior Kaylee Jenkins. Kaylee has been an excellent student both virtually and then as we transition to the hybrid model. She has shown academic integrity by her responsibility with her schoolwork and trying her very best. She is present in her virtual meets and when in person, she is an engaged learner. She asks questions and this helps to enrich the learning of others. She is kind and helpful. We are honored to nominate Kaylee as an Afton Strong student. Alice K. is a fifth grader. Alice taught a coding hobby class as part of the homelessness virtual fundraiser that her class participated in. She planned the class on her own and was the teacher to other kids who wanted to learn more about coding. Leading the class helped to raise money, because the participants paid to take the class, and she also has made a habit of donating her own money to worthy causes. In her coding class, she gave students suggestions of other ways they can continue their learning about coding, and she shared with them about the way she is continuing her own learning. She was a prepared and patient teacher. We're very proud and impressed by her hard work. Next, we have Amir M., a first grader. Amir has made so much progress. At the beginning of the year, he needed his mom or sister to help him log into Google Meets, and he needed many reminders to work independently. Now Amir is working more independently, and when the work is hard, he tries his best. And Amir can now write sentences independently, stretching out those tricky words. He should be very proud of his extra effort. Anastasia Noblet is a senior. And she's nominated because she works very hard. She has actually thrived with virtual learning, and she never misses a meet and works very hard to make sure her work is top quality. She also stays involved with the Afton High School swim team and is a fantastic artist. Next, we have Dion R., an eighth grader. Dion has really mastered the difficult task of virtual learning. He independently manages his day and joins optional Google Meets daily. He uses these meets as a time to perfect his learning. He goes above and beyond with his efforts on his assignments. He strives for perfection and growth in his academics. He does not back down from an academic challenge, and this has paid off as his benchmark data is showing much growth. Dion has really turned a difficult school year into a success and is an excellent example of what Afton students should strive to be. And last, but certainly not least, we have Russell R., a first grader. Russell is polite and kind to those around him. He is always happy to greet others with a smile. Those are our sixteen Afton Strong students this month. Congratulations to them all.
Yay. Congratulations, students. What an impressive group and sixteen. It's, uh, this is great. So thank you for reading all of that for us. And thank you to all of the people who nominated these amazing students as well. It's nice to be able to celebrate them. And one day soon, we hope that we'll be able to do this in person. Now, we're going to move on to reports. And we'll start with the superintendent's report.
All right, thank you. I've got a couple items here and I'll kind of roll through several of them. And then certainly, if there's anything we need to pause and talk about, we can. And so one of the first items, you know, thank you to our board members. This is National Board Recognition Week. So wish, I promise Claire had a lot of good things ready for you. And so whenever we see you in person, you'll get a lot of goodies that she helped assemble. So thanks for all the time that you put in, in a very different year, very different format than what we're used to. And so I think very appropriate to pause this week for, you know, Board Recognition Week. So thanks to everything that you guys do. And I want to make sure we mention that tonight, even though we will probably, hopefully you'll get a second celebration at the next meeting as well. With that, the next item I did want to roll into, I know we're doing this item a little bit in reverse order to what we normally have been doing. We've usually been having a school reopening workshop and kind of using that as the impetus for, you know, talking about what the future holds for the district. We kind of did it in a little bit of a reverse order. We did that workshop at the last meeting, got some initial input from you as board members. And then over the past two weeks, we've gone through a number of things that have attempted to get input, as well as just hone in on what are some of those things that we can do to make decisions. And so we have, I've kind of posted there that as we were gearing up to look at what could be some possible decisions for our fourth quarter learning schedule, one of the things that I am recommending is that we look at bringing our K through eight students back for more in-person days, while at the same time still preserving Monday as a day where we know that we're still going to have to be doing contact tracing. It still gives us an opportunity to thoroughly clean our facility. And so Monday would continue to be a virtual day. And that would be for students that are already selected that in-person option. So we're looking at taking those in-person students that were typically just coming in two days a week and going ahead and moving that to four days a week, Tuesday through Friday. At the same time, at this point, we're still recommending that our high school remain in the fixed blended model. And so that's really the crux of the recommendations. Students that are already a part of our Virtual and Virtual Plus Academy, K through 12, they'll continue with that option. So they really won't see too much of a change, just like students at the high school will continue on with their learning option. So some of the information that I posted that we looked at, certainly, we took input from staff, students, and parents. What that showed is what I think it showed throughout this school year, not 100% agreement on what the right things to do are. And so that has made things extremely difficult. And to try and look at that input, knowing that it's, I don't want to say that it's inconclusive, but you wish there'd be a little bit more agreement across all stakeholder groups. And then certainly within certain stakeholder groups, you typically hope for a little higher agreement. But that's just not the type of year we're going to have this year. And at the same time, we really are trying to make thorough decisions while also, you know, taking, if you don't ask, you don't know. And so I think that we certainly have seen some different thoughts from when we started at the beginning of the school year throughout the semester. So there definitely have been some differences in the way people are viewing things. But overwhelmingly, that's been the tough part for anybody in a decision-making position is just the level of agreement has typically not been as high as you might like. So that's kind of one of the things that I wanted to advise you of. And at the same time, that transition would not start till fourth quarter. So we literally have a month. There's a long time between now and March 16th. So a lot can happen. We'll continue to monitor situations. But at the same time, I think we need to start moving in that direction. One of the things we've tried to do is always allow enough time to properly make a transition. So making that decision well in advance, so that it's not a surprise. We're not scrambling at the last minute, trying to get things together. And then ultimately, we've tried to stick with our decisions. So as you might expect, anytime you make a decision, the tough part is kind of actually sticking with it. So it is tough to make a decision, especially when there's a transition. But then, you know, a lot of times, depending on what may be happening that week or that month, people want you to change and do things differently. And we've tried to make sure that we're continuing to move forward and we don't keep waffling back and forth. And we don't move forward just to go back. So I think we've really tried to take as much time as possible to make sure that every step forward we take, we think it can be sustained. So that, those were some things that went into the decision as well. I do want to make sure that people know, even though we're not recommending bringing students back at the high school, it's not because we don't think it's safe. We think it could be safe to do that. It's just they've undergone a few more transitions than our other levels in regards to their schedule. And we don't, I don't think any schedule is a silver bullet. So let me just say that, that it isn't about the schedule. It's about what we're able to do as far as transmission mitigation. So there is no silver lining, just like there's no one strategy that makes schools safe. So if you just do one thing, that's not going to keep anybody safe. It's really layering as many things as possible, you know, to the best of your ability that keeps people safe. And I think we've done that really well. We've looked at what we can learn from other districts that have had different experiences than us. And we're, I think we're ready to try to apply those in those grades that I've outlined. But I just want to make sure you know that, you know, any transition that we don't make at any particular level is not out of thinking that it couldn't be done because of safety or health reasons. It really is just, I think, trying to look at, is that the right thing to do? As you guys well know, we have had the ability to allocate virtual teachers in grades K through eight. I don't want to say that that has made things easier, but the organization has been there so that we can, you know, maintain that consistent level of contact with our virtual students. At the high school level, we've had teachers that are having to do both of those things. And so that's also made things a little bit different at the high school level. And so as much as we would love to make one decision that takes care of every level, every student for the entire year, we've always, you know, considered making different decisions at different levels, different decisions at different buildings, depending on what we felt like things were telling us. So we'll continue to keep that, I guess, keep that in mind as we move forward. But those were, those were some of the things that I felt like went into the decision-making. And I think that what's really tough is that there certainly can be a case made that what we're doing is working. And you can always say, if it's working, why change? At the same time, you could say, well, aren't you ready to take the next step? So if it's working and it's been working, are you ready? And who's to say what the right opinion on that is? You know, certainly, I think you could make cases either way. And that's what's been extremely difficult kind of the whole year, is just trying to figure out what is that right fit. I would say probably different than where we have been at the beginning of the school year. At the beginning of the school year, we were largely making decisions based upon what we thought might be the case. We didn't know. No one had attempted to do school with a pandemic. So we really were looking at community spread very heavily and trying to take that into consideration. And now that we have a lot of experience under our belt, not that we disregard what the conditions of our community, but it does seem like schools have been able to maintain safe levels, even when the community spread has gone up and down and fluctuated. And so that's, I would say, a little bit different now is that we're able to look on our experiences as opposed to other things that we might have weighed a little bit heavier at the beginning of the school year. And so I think that's something that we definitely, I looked at a little bit more, I guess, differently now that we do have a semester where we have some things to fall back on. So with that, I'll go ahead and pause there before we round out with the third quarter pulse check survey. Any, I guess the one thing that I will mention, I think I mentioned it in there, if students are receiving transportation through our bus service, that will continue. So no one's losing their service. Likewise, I don't think we'll be able to add anybody. So as we make this transition, we're not going to have the ability to add students to bus routes. So that's one thing we wanted to make sure people were advised of as well. Obviously, lots more details to come. We'll probably be talking about this little by little each week. But I did want to kind of bring those recommendations to you and let you know that I think we're ready to move forward with trying to make those preparations over the next month.
Sounds good. Thank you very much for all of the information, just following up on our conversation from our last meeting, too.
All right. Well, if anything comes up, feel free to catch me before we go on to the next item. But we also took the opportunity for the survey to check in on how third quarter is going. So completely separate of any learning option transition, we've been trying to progressively look at how things are going, both from the standpoint of a staff member, parent, and student. And so little by little, we are making growth in all of these areas. So we're not seeing regression. So if you pick out any one of those areas, if you look at, you know, how people feel about that compared to first quarter or second quarter, little by little, we're making progress overall. And that also holds true with the folks that are, I guess, engaging in the online or virtual academy and then also with our in-person learners and staff. So I do think, you know, kudos to everything that folks are doing to make those things improved from where we started. And we knew that would be a journey. We've got a lot of new things going on this year. And so little by little, we're trying to get better at those things as the school year goes on. So that was encouraging to see regardless of the scheduled transition conversation. And so that's another item I wanted to make sure you were updated on as we took the opportunity to kind of, you know, kind of layer that into our survey. One of the things I would point out that we have had the luxury of being able to look at some of the national norms on a pulse check survey. And it looks like we're every bit with and sometimes ahead of how folks are responding to those items. And so I would draw your attention to that, is that sometimes you never really know, are those scores high, low, right in the ballpark of where other schools around the country are? And so they definitely are right with that and in many areas a little bit ahead. So like I said, thanks to the work that everybody's doing and you truly are making progress in all of those areas as the year goes on. Mike, did you have a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment on both of those. I'm just amazed at how much quality data we're collecting as a district to be able to look at and make these decisions. And you didn't make a big deal out of it, but there was an awful lot, there were a lot of input points that were over the last month from everybody getting involved. On the data from the survey you were just talking about, I thought it was really interesting. There's this kind of a natural shape of Gotch's, or Manier's a little higher than Gotch's, a little higher than Rogers', a little higher than the high school. Not that anybody had bad scores. I'm wondering, is that, is there anything of significance there? Not pointing, there's not a problem at the high school with the scores I saw. They were just kind of a natural shape. I didn't know if that was related to the age, if that was, if there was anything that was identifiable in that very consistent pattern.
I can't, I don't know that we talked about anything that we thought stuck out. I think if anything, the one pattern we pulled out was just that the ability to allocate, especially at the K8 level, the virtual staff, that has provided some consistency that I feel like is bearing out with, you know, the experience from those parents and kids. And so that has, that's been something that we didn't really know how that would go. And I think that that's one thing that we took away from it. I think, you know, as you, as you know, young kids, they love school, you know? And the pandemic has not changed that. So they want to be at, you know, school. And then even if they're choosing not to physically be at school, they still love logging in and being part of a classroom. And so I think that that just seems to be, you know, hold true even in a pandemic that, you know, that our younger students typically, that's why they run into a school building, is they're happy to be there every, every single day.
High schoolers just love it.
I think those were the main items that I wanted to touch on. And like I said, I guess the last thing that I did want to draw to your attention is that, you know, prior to this meeting, this morning, we sent a note out to our staff that this would be a recommendation that is getting moved forward. And then we are prepared to notify all parents tomorrow morning. And then likewise, obviously, there'll be more and more information that comes out. But as you're thinking about what is the timing of some of the communication and how people will be informed, I would say pretty much everyone that has a lot of, you know, roles to play in this transition will be notified by, you know, tomorrow morning. And then we'll continue with that communication leading up to the start of fourth quarter.
Okay. I think we're good to move on.
All right. I think the next item is really kind of dovetails into that, which is we had the Academics or the Afton Strategic Planning Committee meeting. And a lot of that meeting was spent as, you know, getting input on what are some of the things we can do for fourth quarter. So that was a portion of the meeting is getting into breakout groups to chat with parents and staff about any possible transitions for fourth quarter. And then, as you can see with the slides there, we also looked at our employee engagement, our employee engagement data. And that's something that we'll also touch on in the workshop. We put similar information together for the school improvement workshop, but we wanted to make sure that a lot of the things we're talking about of getting good baseline data on employee engagement and satisfaction, parent engagement satisfaction, student, that's part of our strategic planning process this year. And we just happen to have that employee data ready to go. So we wanted to share that with the committee. And that'll certainly be something that we keep up with. And like I said, we could talk more in-depth about that specific survey during the workshop as that is part of the planned information. Also, our consultant that we're working with, that has really helped us out tremendously with doing focus groups. So in addition to the parent survey, staff survey, student survey, that was meant to capture a lot of people and a lot of thoughts at one time. However, we've been doing focus groups that are smaller, doing those through Zoom, and it's been helpful to have someone else lead that so that people can provide honest feedback. That person can capture that and then try to give us what the themes are so that as we move forward, we already have a lot of that information captured. So that was also an update that's in the slides there. So far, what were the common themes from that focus group? So we updated the, we updated the committee on that. So right now, I would say we're kind of done with the input process. And now it's more about just taking all of that input and starting to make goals, strategies, and action steps that we can, you know, deploy going forward. So certainly won't be the last time we talk about this, won't be the last time that our staff and parents and communities see strategic planning items. But we're really trying to take that information and make sure we were capturing it correctly and then also setting goals, strategies, and action steps going forward. So that's a little bit about Afton Strategic Planning. Anyone that was in attendance, if you'd like to add anything, feel free to do so.
I think just briefly, one thing that is just worth mentioning, I've been in a variety of meetings with Joanne Sternke at this point. And she's just very complimentary of the district and the parents she's talked to and the staff. And it just, even the survey, which I think when we look at survey data, it can be hard for us to totally understand how it relates to what's going on in districts all over the country. But I just think it's worth mentioning to our community that she's enjoying working with us and really sees a lot of good things going on in our district. She's been very encouraging through this whole process. So kudos to everyone who's involved and who's had really good conversations with her so she can get a pulse on what's going on.
Thanks, Michelle. I was going to say something similar because I really appreciated her report. The responses that we've had have been really good and honest. And so she really had an opportunity to share that with us. And I look forward to moving forward with this. And it's a good group of people who are on the Strategic Planning Committee. So thank you to all of the people who are serving on that. Anyone else have any thoughts or questions about the strategic planning at this point? Anyone else have any thoughts or questions about the strategic planning at this point? Okay. I think then we will, um, move on to our curriculum advisory committee. And that would be Dr. McGee.
Yeah. Good evening, everyone. This is a new committee, a new report led by Manuel Herrera, uh, our coordinator of learning services. The really, the vision behind this is to provide a way for not only community members, but also professionals and experts in the field to give us some, some ideas, some feedback, uh, and potentially some partnership opportunities, uh, to what's, uh, what's going on within our curriculum. So, uh, this will not be the last time that you get to see this report. As this is a, a new committee that we hope to, uh, expand to not only once a year or twice a year, but, uh, potentially, uh, even monthly. Uh, we are using, um, the Missouri Connections Career Paths to organize some of our conversations. And we started first, uh, around the arts and communication path. Uh, our next step we'll, we'll be taking will be on the human services path. Uh, and we'll be looking to engage in community members around that work in the field of education. You might know somebody there, um, also in human services, uh, as well as hospitality and tourism. So, uh, the rest of the report you can check out, but, uh, we're really excited about this committee. And Ms. Burford was able to join us and I'm sure she could weigh in as well.
Sure. I'll just briefly say is just, um, is a great example of another just creative way that our district is interacting with the community. And it was the first time that I've been in a meeting that Mr. Herrera led. And he just brings a lot of energy and enthusiasm. And there were people there from a variety of different community colleges and universities in the area. Um, and you can just sense that they really enjoy, uh, interacting with people from Afton. And I, so I just, I think it's exciting that the work is being done and it's exciting the people who are involved and, um, just have kind of a, have their, their hand in the pot or their foot in the game. So thanks for including me and, um, other community members. It was a chance for a, a great group of people to come together. Exciting stuff.
Any other questions or anything you want to know more about?
All right. Thank you. Yeah. Um, it was great to see just such a, a different kind of group of people coming together. And so we're excited about that with all of the community members and look forward to future reports on this. All right. So next up is the MSBA Monthly Report, Monthly Board Report. And we're not going to watch it together. I hope that, uh, folks have had a chance to watch it. And if you haven't, you can just go onto Board Docs and click the link. But I will give you a brief overview of what Brent talked about this time. He talked a little bit about how the pandemic has brought to light the challenges of public education and the ongoing underfunding at the federal level. And, um, he challenged the federal government to step up and address that and address the needs, uh, with additional funding. He also talked about the governor's state of the state address and how the governor has created the Office of Early Childhood that is in Desi now. He has consolidated early childhood education programs into this one office. Uh, he's also asking for passage of Wayfair to collect online taxes. And MSBA supports this legislation. And then he, um, talked a little bit about the General Assembly issues of note, including, um, expansion of charter schools and the legislation on tax credit voucher programs that provide public funds to private schools that are not accountable to the public. And so those are issues of concern for MSBA and wanted to bring those to our attention. Also, MSBA Legislative Forum is rescheduled for April 12th in Jefferson City due to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic. And hopefully that will happen in April. And, um, there's a couple of other things, but those were like the big highlights. Any questions or thoughts? All right. If not, we'll move on. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. And on the consent agenda are dispersments and minutes from the February 2nd board meeting. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? That would be Jordan. Is there a second? Bridgette? And, um, any discussion or any changes that anyone wants to make on the consent agenda? All right. All in favor, raise your hand and say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right. The consent agenda has passed. And next on the, um, agenda is our citizen comments. And we have no citizen comments tonight, limited to agenda items. So we will move on now to curriculum and that would be Michelle.
Okay. So tonight for curriculum, um, we had, sorry, I'm trying to quickly get to my screen here. So we had, um, second read on AP Psychology, which we had talked about last time we were together. I did not hear from anyone with any additional comments or questions. Anybody want to further discuss that? Okay. So the administration recommends an ISO move that the board approve the curriculum as presented. Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further comments or questions? Right. All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. And then moving on to 7.02, we had, um, again, quite a few first reads. This has been just an exciting year for curriculum moving forward. Um, so for first read this week, we were reviewing AP English Literature and Composition, Speech and Drama Six, Speech and Drama Seven, Speech and Drama Eight, Creative Film Video Media Arts, Honors Advanced Creative Film Video Media Arts and English One. So hopefully you had a chance to take a look at all of these, um, pieces of curriculum that were, were put forward to us there. Depending on when you looked at it, there might've been a few edits done here or there. But does anybody have any questions while we have Dr. McGee here with us? Justin?
Yeah. Thanks, Michelle. Um, Dr. McGee, I, I'd sent you a quick email. So, uh, you know, this is coming. I, I was looking over the AP, no, I don't know if I remember it was the AP English Literature, or I think it may have just been the English One. And just, I don't want it to necessarily just focus on English One. I think this is a broader question that I have, but it kind of jumped out at me with English One from a, a standpoint of what is our opportunity to explore and encourage innovate diversity within our curriculum and how much of this is sort of driven from the inside? And we have an opportunity to kind of cultivate that or how much of it is sort of dictated from the outside? And, and we don't have a whole lot of room. Um, I think what really, you know, kind of prompted my email to you, um, was just sort of thinking about, you know, English literature and, uh, you know, kind of the classics and, you know, traditional canon. And, you know, sort of like this is how we, this is how I learned how to, you know, break down poetry and, and, and classical literature. But that was 30 years ago when I was in high school. And, you know, since then, I just feel like there's so much more, um, you know, breadth of, of just literature, you know, that's out there and that, that we could be tapping into. And so that's where that really came from. But then I do think there's maybe even a broader kind of just question across the curriculum that may not be English. But I mean, it's, I'm sure there are other places where we could have, um, you know, similar conversations. And so I just wanted to kind of give you heads up and ask you, you know, i- if you could just address that a little bit and maybe we could talk about it tonight.
Yeah, I think, um, you know, you, from the curriculum template, as you're looking at that, uh, and in the black and white words that are on there, you're not going to see a lot of innovation. You're not going to see a lot of creativity. You're not going to see a lot of diversity. It is truly trying to represent what are the standards that are going to be, um, a key part of the course. Um, now, when you're going to see some of that, uh, those opportunities to engage are, are going to be around the resources that we're using, uh, in the classroom as well as, uh, within, um, the, the scope and sequence, which is why we provide, uh, some of those additional resources, um, you know, to our board to give context to some of the, you know, the, the, uh, mundane of just the standards that are, that are made available. You know, currently, uh, the, the concept around equity or diversity is not necessarily front and forward on our current strategic plan. However, we're recognizing that we're taking those steps because it's the right thing for us to do. And we continue to look for opportunities to engage. I, I reached out to our English department specifically and got a really long and really well thought out response of all the ways that they're able to engage, uh, around student choice or giving kids the opportunity to choose their novel, uh, and, and really get to the skills or the standards through something that they're, that, that they identify with, uh, and that a student is able to, to really true, truly engage, uh, because the, the character or the setting, uh, identifies with, with who they are. You know, w- we will, we do have a really great, uh, process for textbook evaluation. Um, and we leverage that anytime we go to adopt a new resource. Uh, we do not necessarily have that same process for, uh, our classroom libraries, uh, for our, our novels that we're choosing, uh, and those are opportunities for growth. Those are, those are opportunities that can be, uh, baked into our next strategic plan, um, that we're, we're hoping to find that that is a, a value and of interest. So I think all those things are, are opportunities for us to engage in that conversation. Uh, and I think looking for ways for us to engage our community, as you saw through the curriculum advisory council, like we don't just want people that look like you and me, uh, on that committee. We want a wide range of people giving us feedback on what, what should our curriculum look like, feel like? What should be some industry standards, uh, that we're, we're abiding by? And giving kids really great opportunities to, to see themselves, uh, in the work that we're doing.
Thank you. So, um, can I just comment on that too, Michelle?
You can. And then I think Mike had his hand up before too. So.
Okay. Um, yeah. So I, uh, had also had a similar, um, conversation about that. And just, um, being, I think the way that it's written right now, uh, is kind of limiting. And so looking at that, um, and saying maybe like some of these pieces instead of specific pieces, of literature that are, are written in there, the way it's written right now, it's very closed to very specific pieces of literature that would have to be covered if we adopt this the way it's written. Um, and so we want our teachers to be able to be flexible. And, um, of course I, I was raised on these pieces of literature myself, so I understand.
Yeah. Um, that feedback is, is spot on. And exactly the conversation we had today is like that, that is, um, something we need to continue to look at and say, we're not just teaching these four novels and that's it. That we're always looking for, well, what's the theme with that novel? What's something more relevant, um, that really engages kids, uh, that also gets that same contact while also honoring, uh, historical nature of, of some of those works.
Okay, Mike, I think you had your hand up before.
Yeah, I, I was, as I was looking through this, um, and I, I agree with a lot of comments on the English side, but I was looking at the speech and theater and then the creative film. And I'm thinking about those content areas with, in our current environment and virtual learning and just how difficult that must be. And I guess my question is, you know, knowing that this could happen, if it happened once, it could happen to us again. None of us wants it to, but it could happen again. And how do we address some of these types of classes longer term? I'm not even looking for an answer tonight. It just really hit me as I was, uh, looking at it earlier. And then it just, and it seemed like something I should just mention. Certainly don't feel put on the spot to have an answer, but it, it seems like that's the type of thing that it's going to be a real challenge to address in a flexible way.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll, I'll just react to that and say that I, uh, am very proud of, of Joe Murphy and the work that he has done, uh, to overcome, uh, what, what seems to be the impossible in his first year in a new position, um, working with new curriculum, that he has accepted that and found ways, uh, to engage that. You know, he and I both were looking at that, uh, creative film course. And we, we had some things we knew we wanted to include in there, but we also were like, we need some more expertise. So we reached out to, uh, Webster University and had a, a great couple of meetings with some professors, uh, there in the creative film department. And we just wanted to shore up, are we moving in the right direction? Should this look right? Uh, and, and that you're never going to see that in a committee report or on, uh, uh, on a curriculum document, but really proud of, of Mr. Murphy to be able to be like, I'm coming to this meeting wanting to find out what are some expertise of people that are out there to really inform and make sure that we're putting out, uh, the most relevant work. Um, and then with the addition of all the, uh, devices that we have put out there, you know, really honestly, in the area of video, uh, students are able to capture, edit, submit, um, all from their home, from their phone, from their Chromebooks. Uh, and, and really some of those things, uh, previously were impossible, uh, are now possible because of the commitment of our, our district to providing students with those, those resources, uh, to make those things happen. So, um, you can now record an entire, uh, album and put it out on Spotify and never have to speak to the other people that are in your band or your producer. And our kids are really engaging in that same concept of I can create an author original works and make those available to my, my teacher or my supervisor, uh, all through the cloud, which is pretty amazing.
No, thank you for sharing that. And I would, uh, as you come across snippets like that of folks that are going above and beyond, it's, those are neat things to hear about. So thank you.
Sorry, I had a guest. Apparently it's bedtime.
All right. Anybody else have any questions? Okay. So these were for information only. And like I said, there were, there have been some edits bouncing around and I think still some things, um, waiting out there that are conversations to be had. So when we review these again next time, uh, definitely plan to scan them again and have your attention drawn to any other questions that you might have.
Yeah, I'll, I'll highlight and just say, if you click on the links, they're edited. I have not yet updated the PDFs, uh, which I will prior to our next, uh, board meeting for approval.
I do see Justin's hand. I'm sorry.
Yeah. And on that note, I, that reminded me, I wanted to say, I like the links, by the way, instead of the attachments for whatever it's worth. I, I mean, and, and then to hear that, that it allows for that kind of interactive, like easy updating. I, I think they're great. So forgot to add that.
I agree. It's a much quicker process to toggle from one to the other when we have the links like that. Okay. Anything else? I jumped the gun before. Okay. That's all for curriculum tonight.
Thank you. All right. We're going to move down now to school improvement items. And that would be Jordan, and I hope we can hear you.
I, I made the switch. Am I okay? Okay. I had to make a switch to my phone. So the only thing I'm going to need help with is I can't see everybody. So maybe Patricia, if you don't mind helping me out with that, uh, motions and stuff. So, all right. First up under school improvement items is going to be 8.01 Early Childhood Summer 2021 Program. And I believe this Noel is still here. Is that correct? Uh, for the, um, program proposal for review?
Yes, yes.
I'll let. Hi, everybody. How are you tonight?
Good.
Yes. So our summer school program for 2021 is set up much like it was for, um, 2019 before COVID. So we're looking at two classrooms, um, two TAs, uh, two certified teachers, um, one in each classroom. And then, um, we're looking at having before and after care as we did before. So our program for before care would start at 6:30. And then we would have our, um, 8:30 to 1 o'clock regular summer school day. And then from 1 to 6, we would have after care. Does anybody have any questions?
No questions. Looks like we got all the information we need.
Okay. We're really excited about trying to get back to, um, you know, general classes and our camps and, um, regular before and after care. So we're super excited about that, hoping everyone stays healthy.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Noel.
Thank you.
And as Patricia said, uh, there was no questions. So, uh, looks like, uh, the district administration looks like the district administration recommends an ISO move to approve the summer twenty twenty one after and early childhood center program. Do I have a second?
Second.
That's Bridget for the second. Any further questions or comments on the subject? Anything, Patricia?
No, no other questions. Everybody's hand is up.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor signify by I and making sure that Patricia can see you. Raise your hand.
Aye.
Okay, anybody opposed?
No ones opposed?
Any abstentions?
No abstentions.
All right, thank you. All right. Moving on to eight point oh two, this would be the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two school calendar for approval. And Dr. Brock, if I will have your expertise on this, please.
Yeah, so the calendar that is moved forward for approval is the work of the committee that we met with four times, primarily in November and December. And then we did come back to finalize that in February. We had information put out to staff on a couple of different versions that we were thinking about. It, the start date and end date looked very similar to this school year. So that's, that's a very close similarity. The spring break is in March as opposed to toward kind of towards the end of March, coupled with Good Friday. If we would have done that, that would have pushed spring break into April. So it seemed consensus that people wanted the spring break in March. And what we didn't know when we put the survey out was what other districts were thinking on their spring break. So a lot of time that became very clear to us over the last couple of weeks. And so I I think that seemed to be important to to staff to have something that lined up with other districts and the placement of that does does accomplish that. Other than that, you know, it it does, this calendar satisfies all of the things that we typically require of a schedule. And then we tried to take as many considerations as possible. So when folks had preferences on where how certain things were structured, we tried to take those into account. Maybe weren't able to do everything, but we tried to to get as many as we could. So so that's, that's what we have for you and happy to field any questions or or comments or discussion.
Patricia, anybody raising their hand?
Justin?
Yeah, just a quick question. No, yeah, it it just occurred to me as I'm thinking about what you said. Are, well, I'm actually thinking about today and just thinking about snow days and our ability to go virtual and how does that get? How is that being kind of impacted? You know, because now that I'm thinking about just recently, I realized like we, do we have the same sort of built in snow day kind of thing? Are we planning to treat all snow days virtual? What's sort of the thinking on that? I know it's a bit of a tangent from the calendar, but I think it's maybe appropriate.
Yeah, so we are going into next school year similar to how we are handling this school year in that the if we have a snow day, it's going to be our preference, our preference to do a virtual learning day so that we don't have to make it up somewhere either at the end of the year or if I guess we have a bunch of snow days, we could get into having to make them up on days when we were typically scheduled to be off. So that'll be the approach next year. We're going to kind of keep that in place this year. And, you know, certainly after we live this entire school year, I think it'd be appropriate to go into next school year with that in mind. And certainly that could be something we need to ask a little bit more input on after people have lived that for a little while. Do do their preferences change on whether they want the virtual learning snow days? Would they rather us just have a snow day? I I think the the advantage there is we don't have to make days up at the end if we try to stick with this approach. And that seems to be somewhat conclusive from, you know, parents and staff that if we can keep the last day, the last day, that's always appreciated. And not have it spill over into the next week, so on and so forth, so that folks can kind of have a definitive date in which the school year will end. That that seems to be a shared desire on number by a number of stakeholders. Yeah, Michelle?
I just briefly, it feels worth mentioning because I've been fielding so many questions in the last couple of weeks about the virtual learning and the snow days. It just, it seems like so long ago now, but worth mentioning that that was already in the works, being planned before all of this happened. And not just by our district, but by many area districts to move to a situation where we were using virtual learning on snow days. So just because I I imagine we have some people listening who maybe don't even realize that, but that had been going on before all of this.
Yeah, so this was, we we sort of were, had to structure the first day of school per legislation that came down. We couldn't start earlier than a specific date. And then coupled with that was the ability to do the virtual snow days where that had really not been a provision that was necessarily allowed. I guess the district could have pursued doing it, but it seems like it was more, there were more or less guidelines put out that districts, encouraging districts to consider that. And 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 so completely correct, totally opposite of the pandemic, we would have been experiencing the the last couple, last weekend, this week in a similar manner and that we had planned for to try and take advantage of that.
I'd say we're much more equipped than we thought we would be to handle the virtual days. Who knew how much practice we would have before the snow days came, but.
Yep, that's for sure.
Okay, any other questions for Dr. Brock?
Nope, looks good.
Okay, thank you. All right. So district administration recommends an ISO move the approval of the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two school calendar. Do I have a second?
Second, Kenny.
Mr. Edgar is the second. Any further questions, comments, or concerns on the subject? All those in favor signify by raising their hands and saying aye.
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 Uh, any opposed?
None opposed.
Okay. And I kind of went quickly. Did everybody have a chance to vote on the ayes? Okay. And then any abstentions?
No abstentions.
All right. Moving on, eight point oh three is the migrant program evaluation. And boy, Dr. McGee is always a busy man here, but it looks like Dr. Daughtry is here to assist as well. So I'll turn it over to you, gentlemen.
Oh, I'll take this one so that Dr. McGee can give his voice a little bit of a break. So so in essence, what you have is a program evaluation for no students because we don't have any migrant students that attend Afton School District. Typically migrant students are students that work and their parents work in either agriculture or fishing field. And so typically it's districts that have those opportunities that host migrant students. I came from one of those districts. We had a significant number of migrant students in my last district, but here we do not. We do, though, ask parents when they come in, and we've included the form and then the brochure so you can kind of get some more information on those students. In essence, kind of the history with migrant students is there is federal funding based around that that's then dispersed to states. States then typically disperse that money to regions. And then regions manage those migrant, that migrant funding for extra help for those students. And so you report to a regional office or your state office typically as to how many migrant students that you have.
Yeah, and I will jump in just add on that, you know, we included the the form that we have integrated into our enrollment process. I will let you know that most people look at that form and say, I've moved from one house to another, so therefore I've migrated. So they have identified that they have, they are migrant. And then we've had to clarify by making some phone calls that they're they're not, in fact, meeting those requirements.
So for our new board members, I know you don't feel like you're new anymore, but you still are. This is something that we review every year and we vote on every year. So it will come back around. But it's nice to have the forum. So thank you for sharing that with us and the long description that you included in the board docs as well.
Hey, do anybody have any other questions or did I, I hope I didn't interrupt. Dr. Daughtry, did you guys finish your, everything you needed?
They're good to go, so.
Okay, great. All right, moving on then. Administration recommends and I still move that the board approved the migrant program evaluation. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
All right, Bridget, second. Any further questions, comments, or concerns?
Yep.
All those in favor signify by aye and raise your hand, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Uh, all those opposed?
There are none.
Okay, any abstentions?
And no abstentions.
All right, that completes section eight. Thank you very much, Mrs. On.
All right, thank you. And now we will move on to section nine on finance. Mr. McNeil?
All right. So first up is the financial statements. And Steve, is there anything you want to add to this? They're pretty straightforward this month.
Yeah, pretty straightforward this month. Not anything to add. I'm going to let everyone focus on the workshop.
Okay, this is for information only. Any other questions for Steve? Hearing none, we will move on.
Mike, I just, sorry, Mike, I've just got a quick one. I'm just curious, Steve, just when I see ninety percent of our taxes for the current year, is that typical? It just jumped out at me.
Yeah, it is. So it is typical. By the end of January, which is when those reports were run, that's a pretty typical amount.
Any other questions? All right, so the second item we have is the SSD budget update. Katie on to present this?
Hey, yes, I am. Thank you.
Fine. Well, welcome. And I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, thank you. And I appreciate all the reading you did beforehand. And I just hope to be here tonight to just kind of sum it up for you really quickly. And then also to be here for any questions. So as described in the second slide, special education budget in Afton is built off of partnering goals that we have created with Afton literacy, numeracy, and social and emotional development. And SSD and Afton's focus on equity have shown us that some additional staff are required in Afton. So some of the requests that we have for the Board of Education in SSD to approve coming up here at the end of February will be that we have requested a teacher level position at Gach and at Rogers. And this is so that we can increase our ability to meet student needs there, keep our caseloads low, and focus on specific instructions for students to meet their goals. We have also requested a peer professional at the high school so that we can support current and future programming. It is always determined by the current data and student. And then in addition to that, our SSD leadership has been focused on equity among all twenty two districts. And so what we have actually found out recently is that Afton will continue to have direct position, which is my position, and that will continue to look the same. I will be working with the leadership in Afton to partner and make sure that we have district-wide focus. In addition to that, we're going to get a special education coordinator, which is similar to an area coordinator right now in SSD, if you've heard of that. And that person will focus their talents mainly in a specific building and also have a lot of they will be dealing kind of with more of the compliance situation. So in addition to that, we are going to get an instructional leader who is going to kind of be similar to our current lead teacher, which means that they will work K through twelve and help with focus on on just literacy, numeracy, and social emotional development and all of the research-based strategies so that we can really just meet the needs of all students and have support within our district, which is going to be amazing. So basically, our main goal with all of this is that our new staff will be able to increase student achievement in Afton. We can increase students with special education services and the general education and just continue to increase our partnerships with Afton. I know that you guys got a lot more in writing, so if you have any questions, let me know, but I wanted to dive a little deeper on those new positions that we're requesting.
No, I should, I will comment that it was very obvious that there's a significant uptick in focus here. And so that's encouraging to see the the that there's there's a clear look at improving the delivery for our students and and the care they're getting. And that's, that's a good thing. So appreciate that. Any other comments or questions for Katie before we move on? Uh, yeah, Michelle?
Mine is more just like a brief, just a comment, and by next year will have all forgotten, but I'll say it now anyway. That on slide ten, there is a breakdown of the different needs of students, which I imagine is really great information. I just, I don't, I don't speak education well enough to know what all the abbreviations meant, which is fine. I don't mean that tonight, but in, it would be helpful maybe to be able to see what all those abbreviations mean when we're looking at the graph. And I could have reached out to you ahead of time, and I I'm owning that I did not, and not at all asking you to quickly give that to us. I'm just saying it would be helpful.
I appreciate that feedback. I'm happy to do that. Thanks.
Any other questions? Trying to look through the whole list. I'm not seeing anybody. I have one less comment that I'll just, I'll just make and then we'll move on. But we've got, I noticed that the early childhood was not mentioned in here at all. I know that's a significant, there that special school district has a partnership with Afton in that regard as well. We have a, not that we need to address it now, but as a, we have a subcommittee going on the future of the ECC and what we're going to be doing. And it would be good to at some point in time, Bridget is the one chairing that committee, but it would be good to hear from SSD on on where things are at as we look at what the future looks like for the early childhood and what the what the focus is and the priorities are. So just.
Absolutely. Yeah, I'm happy to help with that. And we do have a different director and an area coordinator at the ECC, but I do partner with them quite a bit as well. So I'd be happy to include that in the future.
No, we, yeah, that's up to, I'm, I just was thinking of it because it's currently on our plate. So and that's good. All right, well, that's, that's it for finance. I will hand it back over to you, Patricia.
Thank you, Mr. McNeil. And now we'll move on to personnel. Mr. Edgar?
Okay, uh, here in section ten point zero one, we have one retirement. We are hiring twelve kindergarten through eighth grade summer school teachers, ten ninth grade through twelfth grade summer school teachers. We have one stipend for a girl soccer coach at Rogers and one stipend for an instrumental club at Gach. Administration recommends and I so move the approval of the staffing changes as presented. Patricia, can you help me with making sure everybody's hands are raised? Because I can't see everyone. So with that, can I get a second? Okay, Justin, okay, okay. And then are there any questions? Don't hear any. So all those in favor, say aye, raise your hand.
Aye.
Uh, are there any opposed? I'm not hearing or seeing anything. Any abstentions? Well, it looks like that motion carries. So moving on to ten point zero two, we're going to talk about substitute rates and I want to see if Dr. Brock would like to speak to this at all.
I think the the rates for the most part, and I I think we posted a comparison in the administrative content. So for the most part, they're, they're the same. There is, I guess, the the new addition there of what is it? The 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 substitute custodian. I don't know that that's something we had typically brought forward. And certainly that's something that if, you know, we authorize that going forward, we can begin to to use that, you know, right away. We don't necessarily have to next year, but that that's one new one that we typically have just tried to with, you know, reorganizing custodians whenever someone's out, but we'll, we'll look at trying to to have a substitute pool so that we can, we can put that in place. That's really the new, new item on that one.
Good. Thank you, Dr. Brock. So administration recommends and ISO move the approval of the staffing changes as presented. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any questions on this? Hearing none. Michelle, oh, sorry.
I just want to make sure it's okay that we're saying approval of the staffing. Is this considered a staffing change, the subrates?
We could, we could amend that to probably subrates so that in the motion, we can, if Kenny wants to reread that, so that it says substitute rates, yep.
Okay, I'll do that. All right, well, administration recommends and ISO move the approval of the substitute rates as presented. Can I have a second to that motion, please?
I will second that as well.
Thank you, Mr. McNeil. So all those in favor, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Are there any abstentions? Hearing or seeing none, let's say motion carries. Thank you. Back to you, Patricia.
Thank you. All right, and citizen comments for tonight. There were no citizen comments on anything else that were submitted. And so we will move on now to our school improvement workshop. And for the attendees who've not been here before, when we've had our workshops, this is an opportunity that the board takes to just delve into different subjects and talk about them and ask questions. And these are not anything that we're making any decisions on tonight, but just spending time to learn a little bit more. And when we're virtual, it's more of a presentation. So board members, please raise your hand and ask questions as we go along. It's okay. It's a conversation. It's just more awkward because we're online, but it's still supposed to be a conversation. And so on that note, I will turn it over to Dr. Brock to begin our school improvement workshop.
All right, thanks. I'm doing a little bit of re-aggregating from folks who are joining us that have been attendees. And then also going to go ahead and let some folks drop off so that they can go back into the attendee queue. So make sure we've got everyone kind of placed where they're at. Let's do a quick check here. Yeah, I think we got every, yeah, got everybody here for the, for the workshop. And really, there's four sections to the workshop, so you can kind of see I broke that out there in the, in the information. Going to start by looking at kind of what I would characterize as achievement information or academic progress. And we're really going to hone in on our new tool that we're using to, to gauge that across all of our buildings. So goes by the acronym NWEA, and Dr. Daughtry and Dr. McGee are going to kind of take the lead on that. And that's probably what we'll spend the most information, our time on, just because it's new and really trying to give you guys a conceptual understanding of what it can do as opposed to the actual results, that what are the results that are in the slides right now? And so just know that as well. We're really trying to make sure we're laying the groundwork for next year beyond. We think this could be something valuable. And then I'll wrap up. We'll probably move on to social, emotional learning. I'll take that and point out a couple of highlights there. Our employee engagement survey, we'll point out some information there. That kind of goes with, as you are familiar with reviewing school improvement plans, we kind of pivoted away from the traditional way we've done those. But typically, under, in our school improvement plans, we would talk about climate. So how are things going from maybe the perspective of our staff, the perspective of even parents? And so that kind of fits with that, with that theme. And then lastly, I wanted to make sure you were updated on as we've been transitioning from one learning schedule to another schedule, to possibly another schedule, fourth quarter, that how do, how has the state accounted for attendance? So I wanted to draw your attention, any, any items that you might be curious about with attendance. So those are kind of the four sections that we're going to have. And without further ado, we really, between Dr. Daughtry, Dr. McGee, and myself, we'll kind of cover all of those topics. I did ask for our K-12 principals to be present and also for Katie Mears to stay on. So if there are questions that, that might pertain to, to something at one of those schools, they're happy to, happy to add their context to it. At the same time, I haven't asked them to specifically present anything, or I haven't asked them to, to, you know, I won't unmute them and tell them to tell you about a particular topic, but certainly they're here if, you know, if, if the opportunity arises, and they'd be happy to, to help out as needed. So with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Daughtry, Dr. McGee, and they'll kind of walk you through some of this information that's a little bit new for all of us on NWEA.
Okay, so I don't know, I can't see on my screen the slide presentation, so is that going to be up as we go, or? Good. So I'll just start out talking a little bit about NWEA and some of the historical pieces to it, and then kind of the why that we're with that programming right now. One of the things that you get feedback, and this is not unique to the Afton School District, but I think it's unique, it's really pretty much everywhere. People really push for something that is kind of vertically aligned. So in other words, something that follows a student from the time that they enter into kindergarten and then moves with that student as they go through the programming and provides consistency for that educational programming. A lot of that foundation is there in NWEA. And so when we're taking a look at what do we want to do with our testing approach and our assessment approach, we really wanted something that's going to follow our students. And the other big advantage to NWEA is that it's growth-based. You establish what is called a RIT score. There's no sense in really kind of diving into what the meaning of a RIT score is besides the fact that it's something that can be measured over a long period of time in even increments to determine growth. And that's really the strength of NWEA. NWEA has been around for a while. Nineteen seventy-three was when it was, came into being, and it was basically in the Pacific Northwest that they decided to get together in Oregon and Washington and create this testing system to kind of determine where kids are and where they've been. And it's just kind of spread nationally from there. It's challenging, it's appropriate, it's a dynamic test, although it always, once, once wasn't. It used to be a paper copy when I first started giving it, and now it's adaptive on a computer. Typically, the test is not a super-long test. Once you get past that first one, average timing on it, usually, you know, we put on the slide is fifty minutes. That's kind of an average time for that. It does provide accurate, real-time data. We'll kind of talk a little bit about the intricacies of giving it during a pandemic because I think that threw some twists onto that accurate, real-time data that you're not normally going to have. But if anything else, it's kind of a good year to go in and get an actual trial with that. So kind of moving on to basically to slide three, and I'll give it over to Dr. McGee, so you don't have to listen to my voice drone on the whole way as we go through this.
Yeah, so on slide three, it kind of outlines a little bit about what a RIT score is. And you can see that it starts at kindergarten, goes up to tenth to twelfth grade, and it's, and it's divided evenly. And as much as people want to focus on the RIT score, what, what Dr. Daughtry shared, which is really the most important, is about growth. We know where the kid is from a RIT score at the beginning of the year, and we're really looking at, we want to see growth by the end of the year, and we actually can benchmark that growth against national norms. So what you see on slide three is just sort of a way to explain, you know, here's grade levels, here's how it's divided out, and you can even take that RIT score and align it to content areas and say, well, if the kid scored a one ninety-five, that means that they are at the correct readiness to do these things. And that really gives prescriptive and anecdotal data to our teachers to be able to design and group for students. Go ahead, Mr. McNeil.
So quick question. When I've heard about this a lot, when we've seen this come up in the past, and I'm not questioning this at all, it's, it's, there's a lot of discussion of there's a different, that you need to measure it different ways at different age levels. And we're kind of pulling, so there's like kind of the pull to do separate systems for different age levels. And then here is something that is more, like Dr. Daughtry said, that's more systemic. And there's pros and cons to both sides. Do you feel like the age level variation issue addressed in here? I'm just, I'm just curious. It's just something that I've heard regularly over the years on this kind of a topic.
Yeah, so for example, our, our K-one, K-two students take a different assessment than our two through twelve students. We also have skill readiness assessments at the K-two level that are specific to, to a specific skill. So, so yeah, it, the system itself is the thing that goes with, with the student. The, the growth model goes with the student. The RIT score goes with the student. All those things are things, but the entry points to that are specific to the grade level or the content.
So the data, so the data is coming from the different assessments appropriate to the grade level, and this is the aggregation architecture for handling all of that data and converting it to a score.
Correct.
Got it.
So on slide four, you'll see there's a focus on growth, and what you'll notice is that growth is really large in our primary years. And then it sort of feels like it flattens out. And the really, the reason for that flattening out is we get into really discrete skills at that upper grade level. And we're not going to see massive numbers in our RIT score, but we are going to still see growth as students continue to refine and get better at their, at their different levels. The slide number five that has the massive data tables, I put in there the links to where those data tables came from. I just took some screenshots, and I want to draw your attention to two boxes that I made. One of them is purple and the other one is gold. So let's look at the purple one first. So on the left side of the screen, the purple one is highlighted around the fall test for a student to be in the national average. So the national mean for reading had a score, I think it was one eighty-six point six, if I can read that really small font on my screen. And then what I did is I took the NWEA national average, and I put that over next to what's called the linking study. So what NWEA does is it takes its RIT score and looks at every single state test across the entire nation and says, okay, well, how would you do on your state test, knowing that you scored somewhere in a certain area? So what you see on the right side of your screen there is to be proficient, you need to score somewhere in the RIT score of, I believe it's one ninety-one to two oh two. Can't see that small of a font, but I think I'm pretty close to those numbers. Yeah, there it is. Okay. So what that tells me right off the bat is it tells me that our state test in Missouri is a little bit harder than, you know, the national average. So, you know, it's okay in the fall to score somewhere in the area of, of one eighty-six and be sort of average in the nation. But our state would require us in the fall to score somewhere in the one ninety-one to two oh two range, which is significantly higher than one eighty-six. I know you're thinking it's only five numbers or six numbers. That's actually a lot at, at each of the different grade levels. So what it does is it tells us, okay, is this kid on track to be proficient? And we'll see that later on in the, in the presentation. So finally, the gold box on the left side of your screen shows, all right, so if the kid started at a one eighty-six, he's right, a normal, average kid and, and third grade, we want them to grow to one ninety-seven. That is the average amount of growth that we want to see by the end of the year. And we expect them to end at one ninety-seven at the end of the year. And then now you jump over to the state and says, well, if you're average, that's not proficient in the state of Missouri. The state of Missouri actually asks more of our, of our children. You can't just be average. You must jump up all the way to two oh one, all the way up to two ten to be in the band, to be proficient in the state of Missouri for reading. So I'm going to pause right there and see if there's any questions because that was a lot of looking at numbers. Your eyes might get a little cross-eyed as you're trying to look at the, those things and see if there's any questions in regards to the RIT score and its connection, not only to the norms, but also our state assessment.
Looks like Jordan had a hand up quickly and then followed by Michelle, from what I could tell.
I was just curious. I mean, I'm looking at the numbers and, you know, you see the means and then, and I, I'm not even going to get into it. So you're basically, what I'm gathering is that the, the state is saying a higher level of standards than the national. What are we, what, what is our evaluation of our school district's performance based upon? Is it the national average or is it the state?
Well, you're traditionally, you're traditionally going to be more tied to what your state assessment, if you're taking a look at your overall performance. I think it's important to understand that the norms are not necessarily your standards that you're measuring. It's more your norms across the nation, whereas this is going to measure the certain standards that Missouri holds and try to put students up against that standard. And that really kind of came into vogue back when No Child Left Behind came in, and they said, you know, every third grader is going to read, and then every, and they kind of put, that's when they became very standards-based and how kids were supposed to achieve on tests. So again, the hard part is, is that like, it's easy to have these indicators that go in to show you this, but really, as an educator, what I want to know more is whether a kid grew or not, and did they grow an appropriate amount as they were taking the test? Because unlike what our laws have told us is that we, you know, we need to have every kid's got to jump over the same bar, no matter what their ability level is, we know that's not realistic. But we do know that kids can grow, and all kids can learn. And so I think that's the more important piece to, to really focus on. This is kind of a nice secondary tool to kind of give you an idea of, oh, wait a second, we've got some things that we can work on to help our kids achieve in that standardized approach with the state-level test. Hopefully answered that. Chris, I don't know if you have anything to add.
Good. Ms. Burford?
So one of the problems with Missouri, at least in the time that I've been on school board, is that it's a constantly moving target. The test keeps changing. It's been causing all kinds of disarray. I would imagine that, I hope, NWEA has, has probably been much steadier than that. So will we really be able to? I, I don't know, I guess, is this, would a table like this even be that accurate in telling us what Missouri is, how Missouri is going to compare to NWEA when Missouri has changed every year since I have known about Missouri standard tests?
Yeah, so this state linking study, if you click on the link, it'll tell you it was updated on January twentieth. And that, that means that every year, they review the work that is done at each of the states across the country, and they revalidate the scores. Now, what we're going to see, as you can kind of see in that national norm over there on the left, a lot of that data is pre-pandemic data. So what we're really interested to see is how does that national achievement norm evolve as we see how students have interacted and both excelled and struggled during a pandemic? So we're, we're going to see some evolution of that. However, you know, when you look at the data sets, you know, NWEA has a much larger data set than the state of Missouri. So it's going to give us a lot more diverse opportunity to know where our kids are.
Yeah, I'll add a little bit to that. The, the other, the dirty little secret in state testing is that what often happens and the reason why state testing changes over time, I know this is going to shock you that it's political, and what happens is those cut scores get reevaluated. So as kids get used to taking the test, we then, instead of saying that, oh, well, you know, we need a, we need, we've got to set a new benchmark to show that our kids are still being challenged and they're still going. So cut scores can change from time to time, which in reality then makes it very hard to say that you can show any kind of growth for a kid or show any kind of comparison year to year for a kid as they go through school. I don't know how many changes Missouri's been through prior to when I came, but I'm sure it's a bunch because Indiana went through four changes when I was there with their state testing. So, and it was always a cut star, and so you're always looking at like a moving target when it comes to that.
And I didn't even, you didn't even add on the fact that it's always bid out to the lowest bidder. So add on to that piece of the puzzle as well. Mr. McNeil?
Yeah, I, Patricia will get on to me if I ask too many questions like this. This data is begging for a three-D waterfall graph. This, I don't know if Justin agrees with me or not, but I'm looking at, you know, you've got our school district, state, national, across the categories and then across the grades. There's something here, and I'll, I'll just. There's something here and I'll, I'll just, I'll just stop now. Stop being a data nerd.
Love it. All right, now I'm going to hand it back over to Dr. Daughtry to walk us through some of the growth summary information.
Yeah, so I kind of start out with reading because I think that's the one that universally we can get data across the board. And so what you'll, what you'll see on here is basically where the growth performance was for our students. It's given you an average RIT growth amongst the grade levels that run along the bottom. And then you can kind of see where the benchmark is compared to the national scoring. Couple of things as you look at these slides to, to really kind of focus on now. One, N W A really is a longitudinal type program. So what we, what we know is that this is just a snapshot for us this first year. It's really a launching off place and a start. And then we really can't say just how great this data is because of some of the testing intricacies that we had. But, you know, one of the things that you look at very early on, and Chris said it earlier in the slide, you do expect like your kindergarten is going to be a high-growth area. Typically because a lot of times they come in and they have the most to grow as they're moving through. And you think about how quickly they develop their skills. You see first grades in that same boat. The intricacy that we had is that, you know, we had a lot of kids that took the test at home. And so you don't know exactly how those testing conditions were performed. Unlike a typical year where you'd have your students in a classroom, the test would be proctored by a teacher and you get a little bit cleaner data on that end. So what I'm saying by that is, you know, you could have had students that scored artificially high because they had some resources at home that they wouldn't have normally had. Or you could add students that scored artificially low. And so it's going to be really tough this year to be able to kind of determine those pieces off of those tests. As long as we still have that virtual component in place. As we move away from that, we're going to get cleaner data and we'll be able to see over time what we're kind of looking at. So I'm not going to try to hyper-focus on any of these. I think what you'll be able to see is reading, the nice thing is we were able to get a continuum across the board to see where we were. Language arts, there were some technical difficulties with it getting it done at each one of the grade levels. So we don't have as good a data there. And then if you look at slide eight with math, you're going to see that we stop at eighth grade. And understanding that with math, once you get into ninth and 10th grade, you're going to start testing in different subject areas than just general math. And actually, even for our eighth grade, which you're going to have about half your students that are going to be taking the algebra portion of it, the other half that are going to be taking math. So some, some pieces there. I, we really wanted to present these slides because I do think these are going to be the backbone slides for our presentations moving forward as we go through this. The other pieces that Chris put together, and then I'll stop for questions. We did some district comparisons with national averages for those next three slides. Actually, two slides, basically. We just left those with our reading and with our math. And so there again, it gives you kind of a nice indicator of where we would have ranked in when you're taking a look at both the, the reading averages and the, for us and for nationally, again, I don't know how much stock you can put into this because of the, the different testing intricacies that we've had this year. And you don't know nationally how people are taking the test with them and also it's our first year. So there's always going to be those challenges as well, just in that initial operation. Think I saw Michelle's hand go up.
I just want to go on record, I felt like you were implying that we might have been helping our virtual students. And I did not answer any content-related questions. I may have provided snacks during N W A testing.
Is that, is, is those, are those the feelings of guilt that are coming out? Is that what that is?
Perhaps.
Yeah, we, we did notice that there were some, some students that, that ended up in the 99th percentile for their grade level. And you're just wondering how that, how that happened. But yeah.
Some of it, I mean, a lot of times it's just completely like innocent things too, as far as just, you have some kids who it was better equipped as far as if you had supervision at the home to be able to help just get through the intricacies of taking it on the computer for the first time. So, you know, a lot of it could just be, just, just, some kids had that advantage, some kids didn't. So it will be, you know, nice to be able to see when we have a more controlled environment, what those results look like and then over time to be able to compare.
I'll walk you through the last couple of slides there. So as you saw earlier, that the N W E A does a, a good job of, of telling us where do we perceive to be proficiency based on the state linking study? And then how, how are we right now with that? So what we provided for you there is, in purple, you'll see like the 2021 projections where we think we're going to land on the state test in, in math there on that first slide. And then we looked at the, the best information we could find, which is 2018. Since we didn't take the 2019 assessment, we looked at the results from 2018, linked those. And then also put in the, the state results, just so you can kind of see that N W E A is projecting that, you know, we're, we're going to, we're going to be okay. And that's, that's good to see, you know, our projections both in math and E L A. And then finally, the last section, as early as fifth grade, it, it can extrapolate a RIT score to a performance on the ACT. So it, it begins to fuel kids with some really great conversations. Because there's some really great college and career readiness opportunities that, that can come from a RIT score. And you can kind of see there in those last two slides on math and reading. Now, the ACT is more than just math and reading, but at least it lets us know and connects how are our students in, in our, in our programs doing? And how are they on track to score both 22, 24 or, or not on track? And it gives us that information.
So if I'm reading this right, those last two show that we, our students are not on track for the most part. Is that correct?
So the hard, the hard part about that is it's giving us on track. So these are kids that are in second through eighth grade. And then that's the purple. And then the gold is the actual juniors that took that assessment in 2018. So you're literally comparing apples and oranges, like there, these are, these are not the same populations. But it does at least give us a feel for where are we right now. So, you know, the sky is not falling because there are literally years for this child to experience growth between the time that this is projecting it and the child actually taking the assessment.
Yeah, I think one of the important things to remember with N W A, and it was going to be kind of something that, you know, as we closed out, wanted to talk about as well, is that what we're shown is a very high-level district view for this. But the power of this testing system in N W A is really for the individual student and the classroom decisions that can be made. So when you're having conversations with parents and when you're having conversations at the classroom level, drilling down into the skills where you know kids need to do work and then seeing, are they growing like their classmates? For teachers, a lot of times comparing, am I growing, growing my kids like the teachers that are at my grade level? And if not, what conversations do we need to have to get better? And I think that's an important piece to this data. Whereas in the past, schools have tended to use and states have tended to use testing data as the gotcha. You're not doing well enough or you're not doing up to a standard. Where this really is about trying to help each individual kid, each individual classroom teacher. It's about getting better. And that's, that's really the process. To me, that's what education should be based on. So I'm not trying to make a sell job here. I just know from experience and looking at state testing programs, they don't do the same job as what N W A does, which is why we're taking a look at this as being kind of really our comprehensive picture and putting value into it. And eventually using this to base decisions for our kids and, and bigger than that, have conversations, which is really what's important with this.
Yeah, so I understood that part. I just wanted to make sure I was actually reading the graph the right way. That was a, did I read this the way it's trying to tell me to read it? I, I wasn't making a judgment call here. Just wanted to make sure I was reading.
No, and I'm not insinuating. I just wanted to make that point. But yes, you are.
Any other questions on those slides? All right.
Just wanted to say thank you for walking us through these because that was a lot of information. And as I was looking at it prior to the meeting, I just, I wanted to make sure that we had that opportunity. So we really appreciate this. I know we'll be looking at these similar reports as we move forward in the future.
Yeah, so I appreciate Chris putting that together. The only thing I will add that, you know, I, I have, I, you know, I think I've said this to this group. We are trying to wean ourselves off of the state test. That, that's the, that's the, the best way I can put it. That doesn't mean that we will just never have to take the state test. It doesn't mean that we won't have to have both of these things going. But we, I guess we've learned the state test could be canceled. It, it was. And, and it also means that if you take ownership of your internal accountability, you really never have to worry about external accountability. You, you just don't. Whatever they throw at you, you're positioned to take it. And so I think this helps us move that down the road. If I had a wish, what, what could come out of the pandemic? There is no reason why we shouldn't be able to use this data for state accountability. There's no reason for that. That it can be done. It's just a matter of would our state allow that? Right now, the answer is no. And so that's just something that we need to continue to push on. It makes no sense to have to have our students participate in this. And then by the way, sit for another, another assessment. It can be done. And so those are the things that we continue to try to have to push on as superintendent groups. Is that we've just got to get better at being more efficient and more effective. Fully understand a lot of districts can't implement something like N W A. So by all means, if they have to take the regular state test, that would be fine. But for those districts that have the ability to build different accountability systems, I think it's time that we start, you know, valuing that and, and letting that be something that is part of one system instead of two, you know, dual systems. So hopefully, if we get this put in place, we stick with it. I hope we see the fruits of this in more ways than we maybe currently can, can imagine. And so like I said, we're in the very early stages and so we, we just need to stick with this. And like I said, use this for our purposes. I do think it'll benefit us in a number of ways that we have yet to, to realize. With that, I'll go ahead and transition over to the S E L information, social emotional learning. Little bit of context, I think all of you are familiar with the things that we have tried to set up as how do we define innovative teaching and learning? Academic excellence is one way. I would say that's what we've been talking about so far is, is what can be considered academic excellence with our N W A information. Social emotional learning is one of those other areas that we strive to do just as good, you know, just, just like we strive to do well with academic excellence, we strive to do well with social emotional learning. And so trying to figure out a way to measure that or how do, do we have measures that could be used to, to let us know whether we're making progress. So certainly, we are still in the early stages of trying to find ways to, to get good at that. We do have three years of information, grades three through 12, with how students view certain competencies in themselves. So when you look at some of those competencies like self-efficacy or confidence, grit, growth mindset, those are what we call the competencies. And, and students are evaluating how they feel they are responding to certain things. And, and we're looking for growth over time with those areas. And so that's one piece of the puzzle. The other thing we're asking students about is the environment, so the school environment. So now they're telling us the environment that you are experiencing within the classroom, within the school. What do you think about that in terms of social emotional areas? And those are being defined as school safety, sense of belonging and teacher-student relationships. And so that's the other area that we are getting input on. And so those are the areas that I wanted to display for you and just let you know that obviously this year, I think just as with academic information, I think we're hopefully optimistic. But I think we all know that maybe there will be some, some things that we have to navigate. I think same way with these S E L competencies. I think it's good that we, we're not just seeing things fall, you know, fall apart. That for the most part, I think we're keeping strong with a lot of those competencies. And the thing I would point out that I, I think the areas where you see the biggest growth are in the school environment. And we know that certainly not all kids are literally in the school environment, but their feelings about school safety, their feelings about sense of belonging and feeling about student-teacher relationships, I think are showing some significant improvement. And so I, I think that those are certainly some highlights with this information is that I think the approach we took on how to try to help support students and parents during the pandemic, asking our staff to not lose sight of the social and emotional support. I feel like that bears out, that's been noticed, it's been realized. And so I think that, that's, you know, a highlight, I would say, of this information that once again, you could have seen that go the other direction. So do people feel completely shut off? Do they feel closed off? Do they feel like we're actually having less contact from our teacher? We actually feel like we're less valued by our staff members? And I, I feel like it's just the opposite. I feel like maybe now more than ever, people are checking in on how things are going. And I think we're seeing that. So that's just one characterization. I didn't want to lose sight of how we continue to chip away at this measure. Beyond just this measure, I do want to let you know our, our schools are trying to be very intentional about an S E L curriculum. So it, it goes beyond just asking these questions. It goes, it goes into trying to deliver lessons on items that will hopefully build confidence, build growth mindset, build grit. And so little by little, we're also taking that approach from a curriculum standpoint and not just hoping that year by year, things are getting better because we're asking the questions similar. So those are some things I wanted to point out with the S E L information. And I did kind of spotlight what we've seen the last couple of years at G A T H in grades three through five, just because that's kind of where we started with a pilot program. And then we've continued, you know, continued in grades three through 12. But I kind of pulled that out since that, I guess you'd say that's where we have the longest track record of doing a pilot project and then kind of sticking with it over the last couple of years. So that's why I specifically pulled that information out. Any questions, comments or observations about the S E L information? Yeah, Michelle?
Just briefly, I think this will be really interesting to see how sort of the, instead of this year, change this particular group of kids going forward. Because I'm thinking of things like self-management and how they're having to develop that in different ways and grit. And so I just think this data will be really interesting as we follow this group of kids through school. I'm really glad you're able to capture it even with all the strange circumstances.
I thought it was really interesting where there were growth areas that I was a little surprised about even. So a, as you said, Michelle, it'll be interesting to see what happens in the future. But I was very pleased to see that even with not being together at the end of last year, there were still that adult student trust relationships that actually grew over time and that was very positive.
All right. And so that's something that as we evolve with our processes here in the district, certainly just like we talked about, you know, looking at our academic performance in terms of national comparisons. At, at some point, we might be able to build that into this. At this, at this point, I'm not really sure whether that tells us a lot. So I think we're still in that phase of looking at ourselves internally and maybe not getting too caught up in what, you know, are there other districts around, you know, the area or nation that do the same type of thing? I think that we're well I think that we're well-served to kind of, w- once we get to some levels where we feel like we have some pretty high performance, that would be a, a layer of context that at some point, I think we, we would be able to add. But right now, I think just, just looking internally is the right, the right approach. All right, the, the next item I wanted to move on to, and this was something that we shared at the Strategic Planning Committee. And it does kind of fit with climate. If we were doing our typical school improvement plans, I would place this in that area of climate and just how our staff feeling in regards to just job, job engagement, job satisfaction. And so that's what this survey was really getting at. I believe there were about 18 total questions. The first 10 kind of focused on your supervisor. So it was kind of talking about principals, assistant principals, the building administration, and, and how people feel things are going with things that they have a big impact on. The next couple of questions were more about the district level. So things that the superintendent or district level administration have a big impact on. And then the last couple of questions were more about communication. So how are things going with communication across, across the district? So that's kind of how the, the survey was separated. The results I chose to show you are across the district, the same type of information is being looked at, at the building level. And so that's something that just as we are moving this forward at the district level of looking at kind of the highest scoring items, looking at the lowest scoring ones, and then setting goals around at least one of those lower scoring items, that same thing is being replicated in the building. And I captured that in, I think, the last slide. What are the items that are being selected for improvement over the course of the next year? So you can kind of see how some of those were similar, and then also some of those were, were different. But overall, as, you know, this is something that we do, once again, have a national percentile rank. And so, you know, this is something that we've been doing a survey like this. It hasn't been this exact one. So this looked probably somewhat familiar to our staff. And so I would hate to characterize this as this is the first time we've ever done anything like this. And so while I, I, I think the results certainly are good, that they, they tended to, to, to grade pretty well comparatively. You know, this is the first time we've really had the benefit of looking at a national percentile. So even the items that, if you rank them from highest to lowest, they would be considered the lower items, still graded out pretty well on a national percentile. So we're looking at the lowest items being in that 75th percentile, whereas overall, we were in the 80th, and then some of the items were even in the 85th percentile. So I think that right there, you know, kind of shows what we're getting at with our commitment to continuously improving. Is that even, even if we have things that are probably fair to say they're, they're, they're pretty high, we know there probably is some improvement somewhere, you know, somewhere in there. So that's what we've tried to, tried to take, take on. Any questions, comments, or follow-up from employee engagement survey? Yeah, Justin?
No, a, a comment rather than a question. I just liked the last statement you just said very much. I mean, it's, I kind of thought the same thing when I was just looking at this without a, you know, with just the context of the slides and thinking, well, 75th is still, you know, like those are the lowest scoring percent, you know, kind of this national percentile piece. But to hear you say that, like, they still score, you know, we're still at that, you know, 75th percentile in the nation sort of comparison, but that it's still, you know, kind of raising issues that you want to continuously improve on. I, it just, I think that's a great attitude and a great way of, of looking at this. Just wanted to comment on that.
Yeah, Mike?
Yeah, just to follow on with Justin's comment there. It's also struck me that all of, that the main areas of improvement related to things around uncertainty, around role and job, and, and that's how a lot of us are feeling through this pandemic. So that's a very natural reaction. I'm not saying it makes it invalid. I'm saying that those things are very valid to work on and be talking about. So, so that's, that's good information as well.
Yeah, I think that's, that's definitely something that weighed on us. And certainly we'll have information similar to this on a similar parent survey, similar student surveys, so that at some point, we'll be able to reflect on that information. But certainly this year has been out of the comfort zone of just about everybody. So usually like to have a lot more certainty than, than we've had this year on a number of fronts. I don't know that any, if you went into a normal school year and said, I think we'll change the schedule at least twice, maybe three times throughout the school year, I, I'd hate to see what your survey results would look like if, if in a normal school year, if that was the approach you were taking. So I, I think people are having a lot of tolerance for understanding this is, this is what the school year will look like. And it's, it's way out of sight, everybody's comfort zone, but we're trying to make, trying to make the best of it as we, as we navigate it. So I appreciate, I feel like people taking that view as they fill that survey out, I feel like they're pretty gracious considering, you know, all, all of the circumstances. But nevertheless, we'll, we'll keep trying to improve. All right, the, the last item that I'll touch on, and then if any of these items, if we need to circle back to them, you know, at, at the building level, we can do that, depending on what questions you might have. But really wanted to give you kind of a sense of what are some of the, what's some of the guidance we're getting on attendance? You can see that where we started versus where we ended, I think that the state knew there were a number of different schedules that districts were going to have to implement. Certainly, they assumed that there may be some students that would be virtual the entire school year. And so of all of the ways to count attendance, that's the simplest. They already, that was already something that was in place because we know kids have been taking virtual courses well before this school year. So that one, I think everyone was very familiar with how that might work as far as attendance. It's really everything in between. So when we go to different versions of a hybrid schedule, what exactly does that look like? If you know you have students that are starting virtual, but they really want to be back in person, that's another scenario that even though they're virtual, right, you know, maybe during first quarter, there is definitely, you know, the, the thought they will be attending school in some way, shape, or form. And so this was really meant to kind of build your background around what, what is, what are schools being asked to do? Or how are they looking at the, the attendance? And so the, the bottom line is whatever version of a hybrid schedule you're using, whether it's two days a week, whether you move to a, a different variation that isn't quite five days a week, Monday through Friday, they really are focused on that in-person, those in-person days. So when a student should be at school, are they at school? And then if you have some virtual days built in there, so if you have, you know, three other days throughout the, the week that they're virtual, they're going to extrapolate that, you know, that in-person percent across those other days. Same way for when we were fully virtual first quarter. I don't, I don't want to say that, you know, the, the kids that wanted to come in person, but we, we weren't having a schedule that way. It really is their in-person days that will kind of be, be used across the entire school year. So that's, that's kind of the big takeaway. Obviously, our state has also tried to help us understand that they're in no way, shape, or form looking to damage a district's standing because of the pandemic. So in essence, it's, it's kind of like if for some reason your attendance takes a complete nosedive and, and it looks far worse than it ever has in any other preceding school year, they want to know you're going to be protected, at least from like a financial standpoint, that we're not just automatically going to, you know, decrease your funding based upon things that, you know, are, are very much, you know, a, a little bit out of your control. So, so far in Afton, I think for the most part, when kids are due to show up, they are showing up. And so that's why I don't know that there's any big concerns we should have in regards to, should we be fearful of where we're going to end at the end of the school year? I can't say that it's going to be exactly where we normally are. But even if it is a little bit lower, I don't think we should anticipate any negative effects. Likewise, if it, if for some reason it's higher than it's ever been, it's not like we're going to have, you know, a windfall of extra, you know, resources coming into the district because we had a really high attendance here, given the different ways that it's calculated. So I think I would just put, you know, add that context to student attendance. It's been, you know, quite, it's been a, a much different way to think about student attendance this year for sure. Any other follow-up with, with attendance?
Any comments or questions around this workshop in general? All right. Anything else, Dr. Brock, for that? Okay, thank you. Let's see, next on the agenda is board comments. And unless there's something pressing, we're going to just forego board comments tonight because we have another meeting that we need to go into. But I do want to say thank you for everyone who put together all of the information for tonight. And was here to present and talk to us and talk us through all of this. We really appreciate it. It helps us to be better board members. And I want to thank my fellow board members for putting in the time and energy to come to these meetings prepared because this was a lot this week. And, and I think you all had some really good questions prior to the meeting and then tonight as well. And since it is Board Recognition Week, there was a great video, if you didn't see it, Claire had sent it to us in a, an email. And so I asked Dr. Brock if he could just play it for us tonight so other people could see it as well. And then we will, I'll make a motion to adjourn after that. And we're not sure if the sound will work, but it's just music. Yay, thank you. Thank you to everyone who put that together. It's really nice. All right, on that note, I make a motion to adjourn to executive session pursuant to Section 610.021 on personnel. And I need a second.
Second.
And is there any, Kenny, is there any discussion? Okay, and it's a roll call vote. So Michelle?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Bridgette?
Yes.
I'm looking at my pictures here, Kenny?
Yes.
Jordan? Just, Justin?
Yes.
Okay, I think that's everybody.